Better background shouldn't. The break. Break. Yeah, it's better. It's not as bright. Yeah.
Just let you know, our audio is going to this unlisted link. And we'll be publishing shortly to become a public link in just about a minute here.
Moment, we're going off over our agenda first, or do you want me to start the legislative session?
Yes, you can start. I'll give you the queue right when we're ready here.
Let me do the, you usually have caucus.
Yeah, we're gonna caucus.
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Just so everyone knows, I received no public comment.
Okay, and we are live.
Okay, council members. Is Ms. Green on yet?
Not yet.
Okay. We'll go over the agenda. Be sure to look at your proof of minutes, approval of legislative minutes of March 30th. I'm sorry, March 10th. And also approval of emergency telephone special meeting of March 30th, 2020. We have no reports committee at this point. An ordinance for first reading, Bill 5. That would go into community economic development. Hello, chief. Ordinance for amendment, none. Ordinance for final passage, none. We'll move on to resolutions. Resolution 18, we will suspend the meeting. And we will vote after the suspension, after all questions are answered. Wayne Martin will give us an update on resolution 18. On resolution 19, that would go into Economic Development Committee. Resolution 20, Economic Development. Resolution 21, Economic Development. Resolution 22, we'll go on Budget and Finance Committee. Resolution 23, we'll go on Economic Development. Resolution 24, we'll also go in Economic Development. Resolution 25 will be a vote. And resolution 26 will also be a vote. Is there any other questions?
Just a quick question, Wanda. So you have me doing the invocation.
Right.
Do you have a pledge of allegiance?
Our moment's supposed to put a flag up. We're supposed to sit here and do the pledge allegiance to the flag as we sit at our desk.
Okay.
I just got a message from Asha. She's having difficulty signing in. She's getting a message coming up saying it's an incorrect password. So. I'm gonna give her some time here and resend it, or hopefully you can get her in.
Okay, Kirk, did you give her the new password?
Yes.
Give her the new telephone number?
Yep.
I had that problem earlier when we did the test call at one.
Ms. Allen, thank you for doing the invocation. Be sure.
Is there any one in particular we should be thinking about? I know about school board member Gerald Welch. He's on the telewriter right now.
Mr. Welch, what happened to him? Is he?
He has coronavirus.
Okay. Um. Just want to say a thank you to the EMS services and all the responders. And of course, our city employees who are handling our sanitation department. Under communications, of course, we have Chief Enderline. He's, is he on moment? Oh, okay, I see. He's on. Okay.
What did we say was leading the pledge of allegiance?
Mom was supposed to put a flag up and we were going to do the pledge allegiance from there. And I can do that. I can start the pledge allegiance.
Okay.
Unless Ms. Bowers, do you want to do that? Would you like to lead the pledge allegiance, please?
Sure, that's fine.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, that's Asha.
Thought I did too.
There she is.
Ms. Green. Good evening, Ms. Green.
Good evening, everyone.
We were just going over the agenda. Mr. Allen will do the invocation. Ms. Bowers will do the pledge of allegiance. Courtesy of the floor, at this point, we have no public comment that came in through the email. Approval of minutes, just make sure that you look at your legislative sessions of March 10th. And also the emergency telephone special meeting of March 30th. Ordinance for first reading is Bill 5. That would go into Community Economic Development Committee. Ordinance for amendment, we have none tonight. Ordinance for final passage, we have none at this point. Moving on to resolutions, resolution 18, we will suspend the meeting. And have a discussion. I think Mr. Martin will give us an update on that. And then we will vote on resolution 18. Resolution 19, we'll go into Economic Development Committee. Resolution 20, we go into Economic Development Committee. Resolution 21, we'll also go into Economic Development Committee. Resolution 22, we go on Budget and Finance Committee. Resolution 23, we'll go into Economic Development Committee. Resolution 24, we go into Economic Development Committee. Resolution 25, we will vote on tonight. And resolution 26, we will vote on tonight. Any other questions?
I just want to throw out, did everyone finally get the legislation sent by Kirk about 15 minutes ago?
Yes.
Have it. Shemane, were you able to access it?
I was able to, but they're not numbered, so I'm kind of having to sort the room. But they do have them. It looks like I have them all.
Dave and Asha, you have it as well? Okay, perfect.
Of course, all of you know Mr. Majors will not be able to be at the meeting tonight. He has to be at work until eight o'clock tonight. So he is excused. Mom, could you tell me if Mr. Wilbury is on the telephone?
I don't believe that he's on the call here. He may be watching via the YouTube stream.
Then council members, Mr. Mattson and myself will give you an update as to what we're going to do with the CDVG money. And funding, and also as the allocations, where we're going to allocate. And if you have any questions, please look over that. Information that Mr. Wilbury gave you at the March 30th meeting. If you have any suggestions or corrections or maybe some changes, please let me know before the next council session. And I think we did receive additional funding for this year as well already for March 30th. But we'll be looking at doing the allocations for that as well. I'm gonna start in a few minutes. Mr. Patrowski. Are you ready? Okay. Mr. Momon?
Yes. Ready.
How do I? Block them out. Still on the screen. I think we're just a little bit behind. That's okay. That's right. Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Green, did you get the email sent out by Mr. Patrowski?
Of the email with the legislation?
Yes.
Yes, I do have that email.
Okay. Okay, everyone, we're ready to start. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to Harrisburg City Council Legislative Session. Today is Tuesday, April 14th, 2014. And call this meeting to order at 6 o'clock PM. Mr. Patrowski, please do the roll call.
Mr. Allen.
Present.
Ms. Bowers.
Present.
Ms. Daniels.
Yeah.
Ms. Green.
Present.
Mr. Mattson.
Here.
Mr. Majors. Ms. Williams.
Present. Thank you, Mr. Patrowski. Mr. Majors, it's excused tonight. He has to be at work. We will move on with the invocation. Mr. Allen, please.
Certainly, in these unprecedented times of the COVID pandemic, there are so many people that we need to keep in our thoughts and prayers, both within our community, the region, the state, our country. So first, let's keep all those who've been afflicted with the virus in our thoughts and prayers. Secondly, let's keep our first responders, our essential workers, both in the city and across the region. Let's keep in our thoughts and prayers. And on a personal note, within our specific community, school board member Gerald Welch is battling the coronavirus right now. He's currently hospitalized, and I'm sure he can use all of the support that we can provide, as well as the family of Jim Mateo. So if we could just take a few minutes and pause for a moment of silence, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Allen.
Thank you.
Thank you again, Ms. Allen. Moving on to the pledge allegiance, Ms. Bowers, please.
President Williams, I'd ask all of my colleagues to join me in the pledge of allegiance wherever you're seated. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Bowers. Moving on to communications, tonight, we get a status report on COVID-19 from our fire chief, Brian Enderline. Chief Enderline, are you still there?
Yep.
You're okay. You have the floor.
Very good. You should be able to see me now.
Yes, good evening. How are you?
Good evening. Doing great. I just got back from an entire day down with our fire cadets at the York County Fire Academy, who are all doing very well. I think it's good to note that we still have our 10 cadets in the academy and the police department is still running their academy, even though Hack kind of shut down. We've taken that and moved it to other locations, both here in City Hall and then down at York County, so that we have those essential employees ready to go on schedule when we were hoping to have them out on the street. I believe City Council's been receiving our daily situation reports. I started sending them to you about a week and a half or two weeks ago. And really, that details everything that we've been doing from an emergency management standpoint. And, you know, since the mayor back on March 16th, you know, declared a disaster declaration, that declaration does a lot. Number one, acknowledges that we were dealing with a pandemic here in the city. And by declaring that disaster, it now gives us the ability for expenditures that we have related specifically to the COVID-19 pandemic that we'll be able to, through the Stafford Act with FEMA and the federal government, be able to recoup a lot of money for those items that we typically wouldn't have had to purchase. Sanitizers and N95 masks and various PPE for workers that typically don't use PPE. Overtime backfill for anybody that would, you know, would be stricken with COVID or potentially stricken with COVID. We had on two incidences, two instances, we had police officers that had to be off work for a day or two until the COVID test came back from the patient that they were dealing with. Fortunately, none of those patients tested positive for COVID. I think probably the biggest, and before I get into some of the things that we've been doing, the biggest question that we've seen come from our folks, folks in the city, as well as the public, has been, why don't we know how many folks in Harrisburg have COVID or how many have tested positive? And why is the Department of Health not sharing that information with us? And they really held that information close to their, you know, really close to them. Up until a few weeks ago, we started learning maybe some more age demographics and things like that, counties of where that was. On Friday, we received a letter from the Department of Health that they're going to begin releasing the addresses of those folks that test positive. And it's going to be up to the counties then to provide an information to emergency responders, police, fire, EMS. There's some caveats with that because there's some non-disclosure agreements. Obviously, there's personal information there. So they're trying to work through that legally on what that looks like. And it's not just Dolphin County. It's all 67 of Pennsylvania's counties that are going to have to deal with this individually to figure out what's best for their particular county. And so we're, you know, working actively with Dolphin County to figure out what that's going to look like. Senator DeSanto and Representative Patty Kim have been a huge help on pushing some of these things through for us locally. And we're very appreciative of, you know, the work that they've done to ensure that we have the tools that we need to respond here in Harrisburg. You know, as far as what we've been doing, our, you know, our PPE, we have plenty of personal protective equipment for police, for fire. We're still getting, we still have a bunch of that on order that's coming in just to replenish as we use it up. The, we've been sanitizing fire stations, doing things like that. So stuff that we typically didn't do, we're now doing. So that on a daily basis, twice a day, they're sanitizing the apparatus, the seats where they ride, the kitchens, the living area, the whole nine yards. And it's been working out really well. The city's also been at the VMC and then the offices here in City Hall in the Public Safety Building are also being taken care of by the folks in the building maintenance, and they've been doing a phenomenal job. We've been monitoring early on, I tasked Nelva Wright, the health officer, with reaching out to our high-rise occupanties in Harrisburg. We have quite a few high-rises, obviously, and the elderly population was our main concern, and we wanted to make sure that we were protecting them the best that we could. We know that we did have one fatality from COVID in one of our apartment buildings. But we're hoping that with some of the work that we've done, working with the building managers and the plans that they put in place, that we're going to limit that spread. And it appears that we've been successful thus far. Again, we don't know the numbers, but from what we're being told, we've been fairly successful at that. We also are working, so some of the things, as we look at this from a planning perspective, and we're dealing with the situation now, but we also got to look look ahead to see what does reopening look like. So think of it as a flood. We know when the water comes up, the things we need to do. And then what does that look like once the water goes down? So we got to plan for when the water goes down. This, we're planning for when does this pandemic end? So some of the things that we've, that Nelva's working on right now are working with specifically the high-rises in large buildings where the water's been sitting stagnant, where, you know, a building might be used to using 20, 30, 40,000 gallons of water a day. Now they're not using any. That creates some issues. And the American Water Works Association have put out some information that we're passing along. So we have our workers protected when they come back to work. So it's some of those little things that sometimes we neglect and forget about that we got to look at, starting now, to make sure that we're ready for when the workforce is ready to come back to the city. We've been working with Homeland, the Homeland Center, which is our nursing home in the city. They have a phenomenal plan in place. Their folks up there have been really on top of it, to the best of my knowledge. And I talk with their emergency planner up there two, three times a week. They have no cases. They put a lot of things in place to ensure that they did not get COVID into Homeland Center. And, you know, as we know, we look at Lancaster County, once it got into that one nursing home, it was, you know, it was pretty shattering statistics down there. Harrisburg Hospital, we've been working closely with them. They're obviously our provider. We worked very close with Pinnacle to get a testing site set up. We put a request into the federal government for 15,000 COVID test kits. Those still have not been received. However, Pinnacle, UPMC Pinnacle, has been able to procure them enough to keep their system going. So their 1,000 Paxton Street location down there, they've been testing a lot of, a lot of folks down there. Where we'd hoped to been able to do more. Rite Aid today on Lingustown Road, I think it's 3607 Lingustown Road. They just announced that they're going to open a self-testing COVID site where you can sign up for it. You essentially get the packet, you go to your car, you self-test yourself, you turn it back in, and then they test you for COVID. And that's really what we're looking at from that 30,000-foot view, is starting to get more people tested to make sure that we have really flattened the curve, as everybody's been discussing. We've been working extremely close, and I'm happy to report at this point, I just spoke with Amer a couple of minutes ago, who had talked to cash, we have no known cases in our homeless population. And we've been really nurturing our homeless population with a lot of supplies. We put portable toilets out there for them. We worked with Capital Region Water and got them some running water at a couple of locations off of fire hydrants. And we set up and are currently paying for sanitation at the YMCA on Front Street for the homeless to get showers there three times a week. Last week, I think there were about, Brian Davis said, around 30 homeless men and women showed up between Thursday and Friday to take advantage of those showers. So they had, they had been without those shower facilities when the downtown daily bread and the Y had shut those shower facilities down for about two and a half to three weeks. So it was something that we felt imperative, that we needed to get back in just for their health and safety. And so that we didn't have any other issues creep up on us. We've had no issues with fire stations. We're monitoring our folks for psychological needs. You know, this has been a big thing. It's all over the news. And a lot, we have a lot of downtime. Our call volume, so just to give you an idea, from April 1st to April 13th, which was yesterday, our call volume compared to last year is down 34%. And that's a good thing. And that's the exact same thing that the ERs are seeing, the hospitals are seeing, the decrease. And that's a good thing. And that's the exact same thing that the ERs are seeing, the hospitals are seeing, the decrease in in hospital visits, which has allowed all those rooms and things at the hospital to stay open for those COVID patients as they need it. We had four members of the Fire Bureau we deployed down to Philadelphia with Pennsylvania Task Force One. They were able to set up a drive-through testing site in the county, in the city of Philadelphia, which is its own county. And that was, that was worked through the federal government because they became the hotspot for Pennsylvania. So those guys just returned on Saturday after, I think it was a 21-day deployment down there. And that's about what I have. And, you know, if you have some questions, you know, we can get down through any questions you have. I just wanted to look real quick at the situation report and see if there's anything that, obviously, we've been addressing the supply chain issue with PPE. That's been a thing, not just for police and fire, but that was a thing for the entire country when it came to nurses and doctors and things like that. So that's about where we are. Any, open to any questions that you may have.
Okay. Council members, any questions?
Just one for me.
Go ahead.
So I know they've been talking about on the news statewide about that, that curve and kind of a, we finally, we finally see, I can talk. We've finally seen statewide, the number of increases daily has started to decrease a little bit. Are we, are we noticing that same trend in Dolphin County statistically as well? Hope you have to unmute yourself again.
Yep, I was trying not to, yeah. So what I didn't do when I put these sit reps together, and I probably should have, and maybe I'll do that for tomorrow, is graph that. Go back and try and get those daily numbers and graph it. In fact, just give me one second. I can pull up Dolphin Counties and tell you what that's been looking like. Because Dolphin County actually, so we were, we were 10th of April, we were at 199, we went to 213, 229, 240, and then 249. So that number really has, for us as well, has started to level off, which is, which is great news.
And I know there's been some talk among some healthcare leaders across the state about when they feel like there's a peak in Pennsylvania, and there's been some disagreement on that. Is there anything that you're hearing when we think that we could at least peak either locally or statewide?
So I've been talking, the doctors at UPMC Pinnacle are phenomenal for the city. They've done a lot of work for us. They're actually shooting a video on some questions that our firefighters had that we hope to put out to them. So we've been talking with them nearly daily, quite honestly, and they expected that peak to happen this week. And so when I'm looking at those numbers of what I'm seeing from today's sit rep from Dolphin County, we only had an increase of nine cases from yesterday and only 20 cases in three days, which, you know, really shows that it's leveling off. So we're not seeing that peak. The caution, though, that the doctors have told me is remember, because we didn't go up in this big, I'm backwards there on the screen, right? We didn't go up on this big peak, that this thing now draws out. So instead of having this thing end quicker, it's going to be a more long drawn out because of flattening the curve. The curve now continues and it draws out longer than what it would have had we had a huge peak and then a steep decline.
Right. And that's probably an important point to bring out to members of the community that even though we're seeing perhaps the number of cases not increases dramatically, that the risk is still just as great.
Yeah, 100%. That is 100%. We've still got to be very cautious and, you know, the big things. And I think that's been the frustrating thing for not just those of us here in Harrisburg, not just in Pennsylvania, but across the country. The doctors agreed on a couple of things early on and then said, now, you know what, now we're going to say this. Now, look at face masks, you know, as an example. And we don't, we don't, you know, we're supporting wearing the face mask in public. The one thing that really took off was wearing gloves in public. And that, that has caused a, from a medical standpoint, is not what's recommended by, by the doctors and things like that. Now, again, that could change just like things did with the, with the face mask. So a lot of the information for us, which is frustrating is, it started out, no, don't do this. And then all of a sudden, they're saying, yeah, go ahead and do that. So that's, that's been the frustrating thing, I think, the whole way across the board.
Those are all the questions I have. Thank you for all the work you're doing. Please convey our thanks to you and your entire team for kind of staying as engaged. We appreciate it for sure.
Chief, do they have a breakdown of our cities, counties, townships, boroughs here in the Dolphin County area?
No, and that's the, that is the information that is held at the Department of Health. So we know the county number, but we don't know the municipality. If you look at the collar counties around Philadelphia, Montgomery County, Chester, Montgomery County, Chester County, I can't think of the other one or two, where you see them by municipality, they have their own county health department. And with that, having their own county health department, they are able to legally get that information right from the Department of Health. If the county doesn't have a health department, that county's not eligible to receive that. Now, like I said early on, they're working on that and there was, there was some guidance come out from the Department of Health on Friday that hopefully is going to cut that barrier down for us.
Okay, thank you. Council members, any other questions?
I have a quick question.
Okay.
So first, Chief, thank you for what you're doing and your entire team. But I know that when they talk post-COVID-19, when you flatten the curve, that you potentially could have flare-ups. And a policy that they're looking at adjusting that is the whole tracking and isolating. When we're having these teams about long, or conversations about long-term planning, is that in the conversation or what that would look like if we had to develop some sort of tracking system?
Yeah, I have no idea what that looks like. And that's something that's been too early with the docs that I'm talking with to discuss what that looks like. You know, and I don't want to sound like I'm bashing on the Department of Health, but they haven't been able to handle this pandemic in a very efficient way from the start in getting that information out to first responders. And, and so I'm not sure what that looks like going forward. I hope that we've learned some lessons from this. I think every municipality, every department, every county, every state has learned a lot of lessons from this pandemic. And I hope that we can put some of that in play for that post-lowering of the, flattening of the curve. You know, maybe that, that August, September timeframe to see what that actually looks like. But, you know, and I just, and I neglected to say it early, but the, the job and the, and the situation that our fire, our police, and our EMS have been put in with having the lack of information out there has been significant. And it really is from a psychological standpoint, you know, and we don't think about it on a daily basis. And for us, it's fairly easy, but there's still that, that, you know, we hear of all the deaths, all the infections. And our guys are really taking that hard because we're not used to, while we're used to dealing with death and destruction, this is something that you can't see. And that's really affected some of our folks. And and that's why we're trying to monitor and make sure that we're doing the best that we can for them, to keep them safe. So they've done a yeoman's job, you know, over these last month and a couple of weeks on keeping everything together and staying out there for the public.
Thank you, Chief. We appreciate all the information that you have given us. You've given us a wealth of information at this point. And thank you for keeping City Council updated on a daily basis. We appreciate all your hard work. And I know with all the recent fires that you have, you're just, you know, running daily. And thank you for, you know, making sure that we are updated regarding the coronavirus.
You're welcome. Is there anything else that you need from me, or I may just?
Is there any other questions?
Yes, I just wanted to just get clarification on the statement about the homeless. So are the homeless being tested, or do we just know that they haven't been getting it? How do we know that?
So the homeless through multiple resources have healthcare providers out there with them on a weekly basis. And so that, that has continued not necessarily as often as what it was happening, but they've started that backup, bringing them into the, into the shelter to get a shower has allowed interaction with those folks again and allowed the healthcare community to interact with them. And starting, I think it's tomorrow or Thursday, I think it's Thursday, they're going to start setting up to do health screenings again down under the Marlborough Street Bridge so that the homeless can come there. And that was one of the things that they had in place for many months. We haven't tested any of the homeless, but there, nobody that we're aware of currently has shown any signs. Now, that doesn't mean that there's, there's nobody infected. And we were actually, from a planning perspective, working with Cash on if we have, if we have somebody that's in a shelter, say the Bethesda mission that needs to, that tests positive or needs to be, excuse me, needs to be tested, we would go through Dolphin County and put those folks in a hotel room until that test came back or until their isolation ended. So we have a plan in place to take care of them, much like we do for police and fire. So if a police or police officer or firefighter in the city of Harrisburg contracts COVID and needs to be either quarantined or isolated, we'll be using the Hilton Hotel downtown here for that quarantine, for that isolation, and then picking up that bill. So the county, through the Department of Health at the state level, has some hotels across the county set up for the homeless population or those that don't have a place to go back to.
Any other questions, council members? Thank you, Chief. We appreciate, as I indicated earlier, all the hard work that you and your staff has done.
You're welcome. You're welcome. It's been, it has been a busy couple of weeks and we will continue to be here.
Okay, thank you. Moving on, council members, Mr. Patraski, have you received any public comment?
No.
Okay. Moving on, council members, we'll move on to approval of minutes, approval of legislative minutes on March the 10th, 2020. Are there any questions, comments, or deletions? How about approval of emergency telephone special meeting on March 30th, 2020? Is there any omissions, deletions, or corrections? Here are none. The minutes will stay unapproved. Moving on, council members, to ordinance for first reading, Mr. Patraski, please read Bill 5, 2020 into record.
Yeah, Bill 5 of 2020, it's an ordinance vacating and striking from the official map of the city of Harrisburg, the portion of School Cove Street from eastern side of North 7th Street to the western side of Norfolk Southern Railroad tracks pursuant to Chapter 3-109 of the codified ordinances of the city of Harrisburg.
That will be placed in the Committee of Community and Economic Development. Moving on to ordinance for amendment, this evening, council members, we have none. Moving on to ordinance for final passage, we have none as well. Moving on to resolutions, Resolution 18, 2020. Mr. Patraski, please read it into record.
Yeah, Resolution 18 of 2020, it's a resolution authorizing the city of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into a professional services agreement with Wallace, Montgomery &amp; Associates, LOP, for the purpose of completing the State Street Rapid Response Final Design.
We have a motion to suspend the ruse. We have a motion to suspend the ruse to discuss Resolution 18.
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Martin, are you there?
I am. Can everyone hear me?
Yes, I can. Thank you.
Great. Thank you for this opportunity, Council President. As you'll recall, the city of Harrisburg, as part of the Second Street project, entered into a design contract with the Wallace Montgomery team. There was other consultants on that team, Dawwood Engineers, Kittleson, to name two of their sub consultants. We did a network-wide study of the city, which resulted in our Vision Zero program and our Vision Zero Action Plan. State Street was obviously one of the more dangerous streets in the city, the most dangerous street in the city. We had a number of public meetings, pop-up events, and what have you as part of that Vision Zero Rapid Response to address the problems on State Street. Unfortunately, State Street's not a city street. It is a state, state route. So we had to do some permitting through PennDOT to make changes to that corridor. We did submit a draft highway occupancy permit or initial highway occupancy permit that was rejected. So for the past, let's say, nine months, we've met with PennDOT officials, including the Secretary of Transportation, outgoing and the incoming, or the interim secretary, and agreed on a configuration for the State Street corridor, a path forward, if you will. And so we went back to Wallace Montgomery to ask them what it would take to bring that project from the current status it is through final design. So in front of you is a, is a resolution and a sample contract includes the design revisions that were discussed with PennDOT in those various meetings, the highway occupancy permit process, which is the largest expense representing about 60 to 70% of the total cost. That'll include traffic signal revisions, things like that, that PennDOT requires as part of the permitting process. There's around $5,000 set aside for a public meeting, so we can discuss with the public again the changes that we're, you know, we will see on the corridor, and then the advertising of the final bid package.
Okay, when are you looking at having a public meeting, Wayne? Because of the crisis that's going on right now, so.
Yeah, great question. So there is a schedule in the draft that had the public meeting last week. Obviously, that didn't happen. We're a month behind with, at least a month behind with the notice to proceed. So I will look at probably June, end of June. We may have the highway occupancy permits submitted to PennDOT prior to the public meeting just to get at least the first round, get PennDOT comments back before presenting to the public. I want to present to the public what is agreed upon and not, you know, not have too many changes between the public meeting and the final build.
So is this a grant that we're receiving to pay for the $57,000 for the contractor? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, yeah. No, that's a great question. So the funding for this is actually in our budget. It's in professional services engineering budget. It's not in a project budget yet. There, the construction costs have not yet been identified. We will seek grants. PennDOT has not said they would pay for some of these improvements, but they have not rejected. We don't have a, an ask right now to them. We don't have a preliminary engineering cost estimate for construction costs, but like I said, they didn't say yes, but they didn't say no. So they left that door open. So we will seek funding from PennDOT and other sources of funds. There are also countywide set-asides through the, of federal funds, through tri-county regional connections. I'm sorry, through HATS, Harrisburg Area Transportation Study that could potentially be available. So there are sources we will look at for grant funding for construction, you know, based upon the amount.
So you are in conversation with Department of Transportation to try to contribute to this redesign of State Street?
Yes, so not for the design, so the design, yeah, for the, for the construction, so.
I'm sorry.
Yep. So the construction costs, I mean, that's a good question. So what we envision would be additional signal timing changes. That's not a big cost item. The big cost items would be some ADA ramps, bus stop improvements, redoing the curbing, because we would be narrowing the road, right? So that, that's the change that needed to be done. We've made several changes, interim changes that we could make. Better signage, lighting should be, is about a month away. We're waiting for some lighting, the 70, 72 lighting fixtures to come in. So those changes we can make, but really narrowing that road and reducing that crossing distance for the pedestrians is really what needs to be done. And that's what finally everyone agrees to. That's what the public had known right away. And so those will be the costs. We looked at temporary curbing, things like that. Turns out some of those items, although they would deploy faster, they're actually more expensive than concrete curbs. So it looks like we'll probably be going back to, you know, the brick and mortar, concrete rolled curbs.
I agree that we need to redesign State Street. It is a speed demon gateway to the city of Harrisburg. But I am concerned about the fact that it is the state's street. Commonwealth of Pennsylvania owns that street, and they are responsible in that. I would like to see them be inclusive in, you know, adding to the cost.
I wholeheartedly agree.
Council members, any questions? Ms. Daniels, anything?
Yes, Wayne, so for whatever reason, I don't have that resolution on me. Can you go over just the specifications of the contract, like the value of it? How long it's supposed to be? It's, I don't, it's not on your end. The files I have, I don't seem to, they don't seem to be in the files I have. So if you could just summarize the specs.
So, so the total contract is $57,000. So so the total contract is fifty-seven thousand five hundred dollars. Uh there's basically uh four components to it. There'd be the design revisions uh to the. You know, the the concepts that were developed during the um public engagement portion and things like that. Uh there would be the highway occupancy permit, so that would be requesting changes to a state highway. Um by a municipality, similar to like a private developer might request like a driveway entrance or changes. Uh maybe a signal, something like that. So that's the major cost. So that's about thirty thousand dollars for that permitting process. So we would submit electronically plans to PennDOT studies, things that they would require, including the traffic signal, timing revisions. Uh then there'd be a public, uh there's some budget for public meeting around five thousand. And then the planned advertisement uh bid package, so put together the um construction drawings and the bid package together. For bidding on by contractors. Um so that that's basically the scope, the timeline, schedule that's uh in there. Again, this will have to be revised, but it 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 based a notice to proceed on March sixteenth date, which is obviously pushed back. A month or or so, and then advertising in July of uh twenty twenty. So if we push that back, we're looking at. Um you know, maybe an August, September timeframe. Some of the work can be done in the winter months, concrete work, things like that. Um but that that that's basically the timeline. It includes uh. Two uh highway occupancy permit submissions and then the public meeting that we mentioned was originally scheduled for April sixth that. We'll try to um, you know, push to uh midsummer. Uh you know, assuming everything, we're allowed to meet again, right?
Any other questions? Mister Mattson? Okay, Wayne, I do have another question. So um are we promoting WBE and MBE inclusive in this contract? Will they be following the city of Harrisburg guidelines?
So this uh this contract was originally a task of the Second Street Contract. Where they did have the uh DBE participation, Dawood Engineering was their uh DBE sub. I I will have to ask, because I don't have a breakdown on this particular task of uh. Of who, you know, if they're using any of those subs on this particular task. But they have exceeded, on the Second Street task as a whole, they have exceeded the DBE. Participation with uh Dawood Engineering being that DBE sub. But on on this particular task, I believe most, most, if not all, this work was going to be Wallace Montgomery self-performing.
Any other questions, council members? Okay, Mister Martin, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, may I have a motion to go back into the, do the legislative business?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Thank you. We're now back into the session. Mister Petrowski? Please call the vote. For resolution eighteen, two thousand twenty.
Point the vote for resolution eighteen of twenty twenty, Mister Allen.
You you did a motion. You don't, you don't have a motion on the, on the resolution yet. You just had a back in session motion.
Um yeah, okay, I'm sorry. Have a motion to uh approve resolution eighteen, two thousand twenty.
Moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments on the motion? Please call the vote.
Mister Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mister Mattson?
Yes.
Mister Majors, Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution eighteen passes.
Thank you, Mister Petrowski. Moving on to resolution nineteen, two thousand twenty.
Resolution nineteen of twenty twenty, it's a resolution approving the lot consolidation and preliminary. Final land development plan submitted by Jonathan Hudson to construct the three-story, one hundred and twenty-nine thousand square foot office building with. On-site parking at the property to be known as twenty-five twenty-five North Seven Street.
That will be placed in Economic Development Committee. Moving on to resolution twenty of two thousand twenty.
Resolution twenty of twenty twenty is a resolution approving the revised lot consolidation and preliminary final land development plan. Submitted by E- Dr. Eric Dar on behalf of Harrisburg University to construct a new eleven-story institutional. Building consisting of university classrooms and a service unit.
That also will be placed in Economic Development Committee. Moving on to resolution twenty-one.
Resolution twenty-one of twenty twenty, it's a resolution granting an additional extension of time for. The approval of the subdivision and land development plan for twenty-two sixteen Brookwood Street. And the five sixteen Melrose Street, known as Brookwood Commons until July. First twenty twenty to allow the Harrisburg Planning Commission to review and make recommendations on the plan.
And that also will be placed in Economic Development Committee. Moving on to resolution twenty-two.
Resolution twenty-two of twenty twenty, it's a resolution authorizing the city of Harrisburg. To enter into an intergovernmental cooperation agreement with the Pennsylvania Department of Health. For the purpose of receiving up to five hundred forty thousand two hundred fifty dollars to fund. Lead hazard control activities within the city of Harrisburg.
That will be placed in Budget and Finance Committee. Moving on to resolution twenty-three.
Resolution twenty-three of twenty twenty is a resolution approving the lot consolidation and preliminary. Final land development plan submitted by Jamie and Harvey to construct four attached. Single-family townhomes along the six hundred block of Woodbine Street.
That will be placed in Economic Development Committee as well. Moving on to resolution twenty-four.
Resolution twenty-four of twenty twenty is a resolution approving the lot consolidation and subdivision plan submitted by Randy Good. To consolidate and subdivide the properties at eight thirty-three and one oh oh one Paxton Street and nine seventeen South French Street.
And that also will be placed in Economic Development Committee. Moving on to resolution twenty-five.
Resolution twenty-five of twenty twenty, it's a resolution of the City Council of the City of Harrisburg to ratify and confirm the. Mayoral Declaration of Public Health COVID nineteen disaster emergency. March sixteen, twenty twenty, and related emergency measures to convey the appreciation, support of council, extraordinary efforts. Of city staff and the entire Harrisburg community in their perseverance in responding to the. This global pandemic and approving the continuation of the declared state of emergency for the city's ongoing. Efforts to confront this public health crisis.
Council members, any questions or comments on resolution twenty-five? Here and now, please call the vote.
Mister Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mister Mattson?
Yes.
Mister Majors, Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution twenty-five passes.
Thank you. Moving on to resolution twenty-six.
Resolution twenty-six of twenty twenty is a resolution of the City Council of the City of Harrisburg authorizing and endorsing a real estate tax deferment. Of interests and penalties otherwise due on real estate taxes levied in. The city of Harrisburg upon land and improvements on tax parcels within the city.
Council members, any questions or comments? Here and now, please call the vote.
Mister Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mister Mattson?
Yes.
Mister Majors, Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution twenty-six passes.
Moving on to old business, council members, is there any old business that you would like to discuss at this point? Moving on to new business, is there any new business that you would like to bring? Okay, Mister Allen?
Uh I just wanted to get an update in time for our next meeting. Um I'm understanding when it comes to. Uh the budgetary impact we might be facing as a result of what's happening. Uh to our city's budget, that we may not see that due to just kind of when tax revenues come in. Um but have we anticipated where any potential revenue shortfalls might exist? Um and are we, do we have any planning or discussion how we're going to deal with those budgetary, potential budgetary shortfalls? Not the F to have an answer right now, but in time for perhaps our next meeting, uh maybe a good update and overview of what we're facing would be helpful.
Mister Weber, did you hear what Mister uh Allen requests?
Did.
Okay, thank you. And you will have that to us before the next meeting. And I think we're gonna have another meeting next week because we're gonna have to um. Look at all the correspondence that came into Economic Development Committee. I think that some of that is time sensitive. Am I correct, Mister Grover?
Uh some of it is, some of it is not. Uh I believe we provided the. Drop dead dates on them by statute with each of the uh cover memos. Uh there, there were two other issues uh that were raised. I had spoken earlier today with you about it. One was, there's an. Basically, an emergency small business fund between Impact Harrisburg and the city. Which we would hope to workshop next week uh at council from the, taking money from the sitting revolving loan fund. And providing uh cash assistance to uh small businesses and a program that's being developed. Uh and then moving it forward for a vote on the last Tuesday of April. Uh Impact Harrisburg boards approved five hundred thousand dollars. The request is the city do the same, which the mayor is agreeable to. Uh and then move that so there's actually money going out to these small businesses as lifelines. Uh hopefully by the very beginning of May. So there's been a lot of work going into those programs, but we would need to have council review it. And make uh some determinations about whether they're satisfied with the program. Uh so that they can move forward uh for assistance to small businesses.
Can you give us an update, Mister Weber, on what's in that revolving loan fund?
In terms of?
No, just give us the amount in the city revolving loan fund.
About two point one million dollars.
Okay, I want, I know you, we've already spoken about that, but I want to make sure that council members are aware of what's in that particular fund. So when would you like to have a meeting, Mister Grover?
The request is to workshop it before, even before the introduction formally of the of the resolution. Have the documents to the council ahead of next Tuesday's meeting and workshop it at that session. Otherwise, it'll push into mid-May.
Okay.
And some of these places are really, you know, their doors are closed right now. They can't pay their people, they can't pay their vendors.
Okay, uh well, I was uh in agreement with you to have another meeting next Tuesday. And to look at uh addressing some of the issues that's in the Economic Development Committee. You have six, Mister Mattson. And also, um there's another issue that you wanted to talk about, Mister Grover?
Uh I think we had talked earlier and today, uh I talked to Mister Woolley and yourself. Uh and I think we're gonna have a conference call on this, but on um the uh. I understand at the eight, in the March meeting, there was an announcement there'd be a work session on the public uh. Grant programs through DBHD. Uh I'm not sure the full scope of of the, what the workshop you're, we're looking for is. But uh the promise, I think publicly by the council was to be a workshop shop and a vote tonight. That's obviously pushed back. Um but if we're coordinating a work session, we we need to have sort of a scope of what the council uh needs to see and hear. Whether that's the CDPG, whether that's ESG, the home, a combination of those. Uh that's, that's still the money from last October, but it's going out the door.
I want to get that funding out, right, because that the other money has already came in for two thousand twenty. And so, and some of these agencies are in dire need of that funding.
So what, I understand it. So that would, that that was the request. Uh I think we're to be just working offline, trying to figure out how to structure that. I talked to, I got Mark today. We'd ask Lily Williams to to come on and and speak. Uh but I will note there was a presentation which you referenced earlier in this meeting. Back in March tenth, I think, by Mister Woolley.
Yes.
And I think uh Ms. Williams participated in that, Lily Williams. So I, if there's additional information or if it's, you want to hear from additional people. Because particularly because of this format, we need to work through that mechanically. That is, so who who would council be looking to hear from?
And myself and you, uh myself and um. Mister Woolery and you will meet sometime next week or be on a phone conference call. To decide when we, what we're going to do as far as the allocation of those fundings. We already have a copy from the last meeting in March tenth and also in March uh thirtieth. Uh Mister Woolery gave you the exact totals that he was going to allocate to the sub recipients. Please look at that information and if there's any changes that you would like to make, please have that information uh. Give that information or send it by email to Mister Petrowski before the next week, before the next meeting next Tuesday. Um Mister um Grover, did you find out that there was a time that HUD? Is going to allow for, a lot for us to give this funding out before we lose it, because if, within the next four months. It's going to be the end of the funding period.
I I I don't think that anyone can rationally predict where anything is going to go while things are closed down. Even the programs they would do and pay for can't happen for facilities that aren't allowed to be open right now. So the contractors are barred from doing the work. So, you know, I don't, I don't know what the solution will be. I would suspect in good faith, people will come up with solutions to make sure the money gets properly spent. Uh and that the contracts will get extended to make that happen.
I just don't want to see the money from the CDPG funding go back to the federal government.
As long as we all do our part, that should not happen.
Okay, because it's been almost, what, three or six months that we've been going back and forth with this and the changeover of personnel in that department? We'd like to see that money be allocated to the sub recipients. And make sure that they will be able to provide services for our residents here in the city of Harrisburg.
I I believe the council's been provided that data by Mister Woolley and Ms. Williams.
Okay, Mister, Ms. Daniels? Ms. Daniels, okay. Any other questions, council members? Okay. Thank you, Mister Grover.
You're welcome.
There's, there's no additional business. I'd ask for a motion to adjourn, please.
So moved.
You have a second? Hello?
Second.
Thank you. Meeting is officially adjourned. Thank you, council members.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.